Yeah, the music comes on when they're, when they.
This was either you to read or him.
When they're ready for us to roll, that comes on.
He really shit.
No.
Your line, is it he on?
No.
He's on.
Oh, well, your line.
Okay, oh, sorry, good, thank you. All right, good evening, welcome everyone to the Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission. In attendance is regular members, or alternate member, Ponder, regular member, member Sienna Ribano, and I'm acting Chair Galdenzi. First order of business, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next order of business are the minutes. Maybe we'll start as much as we can do, we still have outstanding October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, January fifth, twenty-three, and we, I'm not sure we have them even in our packets, so maybe we'll table those to next meeting?
Right, yeah, those two we table.
So then what we'll do is we can, February second minutes, we have myself, Barry, and Charles.
I think we have enough.
Yep, we have enough.
To vote.
So I'll give everyone a minute to look them over, if you haven't already, kind of, just give me a nod or gesture when you're, when you're.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-three.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Abstain, abstain, yeah. So three a's, one abstention. All right, moving on to old business. Under A, it's application two thousand twenty-two dash ten, one thousand and three, Middletown Avenue, I two zone, site plan for construction of new medical building and associated site work. Owner Vincent Capasso, applicant James Freddy, P E L S, Criscolo Engineering. That's a continuation from our last meeting.
Yes, hi, James Freddy from Criscolo Engineering at, in Branford. So we presented this office building last week, there was a couple of outstanding issues. One, the lighting plan, which we did forward to staff, and there were some other comments from the house engineer. He wanted a drainage report and a couple of other things, which we provided to him. I did talk to him today, he didn't seem to have any issues with anything, but I didn't see, I guess there was an email.
He did, he did prepare a stormwater analysis report where he basically approved what was presented. I don't have a copy of it, I believe it was sent off to you this afternoon via email, but I'm not sure that actually happened. But he did, he did approve of the storm system.
Okay, how about lighting plan, have you seen a lighting plan?
I reviewed the lighting plan and it conforms with the regulations. If Jim wants to present it, at least we'll know.
I do.
Where the poles are and.
We, we did, they did provide a, you know, a photometric plan. We're basically at zero where the town line is, if you remember that whole.
Yep.
Discussion about town line. But we've got a couple of poles here, here and here, and one off the side here, and then a couple of poles in the front of this parking space, and in the front of this parking space here, so, kind of just really focusing the light in, in between the two buildings, and soon as you get past, it goes to zero pretty quick, so. And then the only other question was about the paving and the road, but he said he was gonna talk to you.
The road is off-site, so it's really not part of the conversation.
Right.
It's a, it's a town road and, and there's an easement, it's not a town road, but it's a town-owned access way. And as part of the easement that you have over it, there's cooperative agreements that need to be maintained, and I understand from the applicant that he's willing to work with the town to maintain the easement up to the quality that it should be.
I haven't done that before, so it's not the first time.
Yeah, I believe the fire marshal or fire chief also said it at their needs, right? If I recall from last meeting?
I, I, I don't remember that specifically, but it's, it's off-site and your purview is to be onsite.
Okay.
So I mean, you can, you can deal with traffic issues off-site, you can deal with, with.
I meant fire, fire engine access into that back, so they could fight a fire.
Right.
Yeah, that was my point, but I, I believe, if you have the, I believe that was part of last meeting.
Yeah, there was a letter from the fire chief, and he asked, you know, if there was an elevator, which there is, and access to the building, which there's a ramp on the plan, which I showed, and then a spot for ambulance get up, and because we have sort of a loop in two driveways, even if an ambulance pulled right up in front of the building, there would still be access to people get in and out, so.
So commissioners, any comments? I think again are, just to kind of summarize what was already said, I think the outstanding things with the lighting plan, which you saw, it was approved by the planner, and then it was the drainage, which.
Which.
Which Victor, Victor approved via letter, we don't have it, but I think.
But we'll get it in the record.
Yeah, we'll get it in the record, and it was okay, as you called, so. So our, our local SME expert engineer says it's good, it's good.
Right.
For me.
Any questions I had, it was resolved from last, last meeting as well, so nothing new.
I think the only, the only issue that we did discuss was that there was no sort of maintenance plan included with the site plan in terms of the cleaning the storm drains and sweeping the roads and your sort of boilerplate.
Yeah, I think we had some generic road control kind of stuff that addressed some of that, but we can add notes to the, to the enlarged plan, that will be the plan that gets used, so that it's clear.
That would be good.
Do we need that as a condition?
We can add that as a condition.
I think we just add it as a condition, make it cleaner.
So we have it, not that we don't think you would do it.
Add stormwater maintenance notes to the site plan?
You'll have to read that additionally. I think we're adding it now.
What type of timeline are we looking at?
You do it. Probably one year prior. Been to ourselves, been to know our construction mostly ourselves.
So you'll be breaking ground this spring?
Yeah, yes.
Well, if it stays like this, any minute.
Yeah.
It'll be a tough for your foot.
I mentioned for our main purpose to beautify the area, which we've been doing the last ten years really heavily.
And if we have any signage issues, we, you can come up with signage as the plans develop, that's a separate zoning permit request to make.
Yeah. There would be no sign on the building, it'd just be a sign where we had in front of their mailbox over there.
Sign where the realtor is now.
It says Dano on it right now.
Yeah.
Yep. Maybe part, maybe part of that sign.
Do we have any further comments from the commission?
Yes, feel good about.
Motion, yeah, if you have a motion.
David, for adding in the condition for the added storm drain maintenance plan, so if I just say that, we'll be clear?
Yep, stormwater maintenance plan is required.
Stormwater maintenance plan.
Is required.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve planning and zoning application, two thousand twenty-two, TAC ten, site plan permit request under section twenty-three, schedule A, line C, TAC two, for construction of a new medical office building, associated site work, parking, stormwater infrastructure, onsite septic landscaping and lighting at ten oh three Middletown Avenue, assessor map fifty-six, lot sixteen A, zone I, TAC two, owner Vincent Capasso, applicant, James Freddy, Criscolo Engineering LLC, as contained in submitted application documents and shown on plans entitled property located at ten oh three Middletown Ave, CT RT seventeen, North Branford, Connecticut, prepared by Criscolo Engineering LLC, containing the following sheets, sheet one of five, existing conditions, plan dated October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, sheet two of five, site layout plan dated January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, sheet three of five, site grading and utilities plan dated January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, sheet four of five, site details dated January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, sheet five of five, erosion, sediment and wa, wastewater control notes and details dated November fourth, two thousand twenty-two, sheet L A, TAC one, proposed landscaping plan dated January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, architectural plans and specs for Capasso Medical Building, ten oh three Middletown Ave, North Branford, Connecticut, prepared by Elm City Architects LLC, containing the following sheets, sheet A, TAC one, floor plans, first and second floor plan dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, sheet A, TAC two, four floor plans, north, south, east and west elevations dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, sheet A, TAC three, cross sections dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, with the following standard conditions, one C, comma, two, comma, four, comma, seven, comma, eight, comma, nine, comma, thirteen, and the added condition of the stormwater maintenance plan is also required, and all other standard conditions.
Okay, and you may want to make an amendment just to get the lighting plan on there.
With the added amendment and added condition that the lighting plan is added to the standard conditions on this motion.
And have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Pass this carries.
Thank you. Okay, five other business.
I sent you an email earlier the day about John Donadio at eighty-seven Zero Road. Did you all get a chance to briefly look at that?
Mm-hmm.
He's here tonight. Basically, there's been two approvals on this property. The first approval was with a fifty-six hundred square foot building in the front and an eight thousand square foot building in the back. Subsequent to that, he came back and asked for an eight thousand building in the front and a, and nothing in the back. And what he would like to do now is build the eight thousand square foot building in the front as approved, and then build a sixty-eight hundred, forty-eight hundred square foot building in the back instead of the eight thousand square foot building in the back, so he's gonna make that building smaller.
Right.
But it's still gonna be in the footprint of what was approved.
So just switching the sides, sizes?
Not even so much, there's.
Before, I'm sorry, before we go, do we administratively have to amend the agenda officially through a motion?
I, I was just bringing it under other business.
Okay, good, yeah, in the past we've done that, so that's fine.
That's fine, you're, you're the chairman, you can.
No, that's, if it's okay to do, we'll just keep doing it the way you do it, that's perfect, I don't want to make it complicated, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm John Donadio, so there's been a bit of confusion, been a bit of a timeline, I can give you a quick synopsis if you have a second.
Perfect.
In two thousand seventeen, I tried, I was inquiring about property when Carey was the town planner, and a previous property on Route eighty, actually like north of Dependable Hydraulics, was like just foundation sitting there. I have a trucking company, went and put a material yard in, sell some mulch topsoil, and that didn't qualify for that, she found another lot for sale, which led me into I two, end of Zero, eighty-seven Zero Road. I came in with, so it was, yeah, then oh seven, back in August seventeen, I met with planning and zoning just to make sure before I purchased property that it would actually be, meet the use of material yard, which it did. June of nineteen, I was finally able to get the deal done, and we purchased the property. November of twenty, I was approved for two buildings on the property, one which was a fifty by a hundred with a twenty third, by thirty bump out, and then eighty by a hundred in the back, like just a cold storage warehouse. Then in twenty-one, we were working with the town for approval for a modification, because it was actually cheaper to just incorporate the offices and make the front building eighty by a hundred, and still leave the eighty by a hundred in the back, the town approved it, we were good, and then now it was time, as COVID came and everything went through the roof and trying to get financing, construction costs went through the roof, I've been, this project's been hemorrhaging money for, since, since seventeen, probably lost a couple hundred grand just in, to cost of materials from then till now, it's insane. So after I finally had the approval, I tried getting a mortgage on the property, and because the building expenses and everything else, the site work, the concrete, I couldn't, it wouldn't apprise out, I couldn't get a mortgage. So then now we're back to the drawing board, and then now, when that Will was here as the town planner, he had us, Anderson Engineering submit a, he, for some reason he wanted to break it up in phases, because I was only going to build one building at a time, which originally was the front building, so, building A on the plans, we have all sorts of plans if you guys want to look through it. So we're gonna put that building there, and then building B became phase two, and then a retention pond, because we'd have to do some site work, became phase three. So we never actually took the building off of any plans, it was just broken up into phases, and then he had me come back with stamped plans with just building A on it, so it was never removed, everything was still always approved, but the last approved site plan just showed building A on there. But I have all the other approvals, I have the actual approval letter for the two buildings, and that's, David's unfortunately stuck, kind of thrown in the middle of the hour, now my third planner, and it's like, so I was trying to just get an approval to construct a sixty by eighty in the back, I was gonna do a pole barn, just simply cold storage, concrete slab, have a hose in there and a slop sink to wash our hands, because I can't, I just can't afford to put anything bigger or better in, but I have rent, I have the mortgage on this property, and it's just like, I have to, I need a building to move my business to, so I just was figuring that I, I wanted to just downgrade it to a smaller building, already in the approved spot, just, like everything's in the footprint, just literally making the building smaller, so that's, there's no, really no changes, other than, would you mind if I made my building smaller? I guess would be the way to figure it out.
That's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Do we have the actual application, or, I, I just, I didn't print it out or anything? Did you send it to us?
We have, I, I gave you the two approvals.
Right, but do we have them, do we have a hard copy of it?
Sure.
We did, Inland did a site walk, with you originally had the truck pull through or pull in, right?
Correct, that's correct.
That was the original plan.
Yes, that was the building up front.
Carey was here.
Correct.
I remember doing that site walk.
Yep, yeah, because that was where.
I know where it is.
They had to get the approval to put the septic system over the bank, but it was within the encroachment area, and that's also part of the problem, is because wetlands needed such an oversized septic, so there would never be, like, they were concerned, because like, how many employees you have, I said, three. Like, I have the septic system that could run a hotel, like, I have, it's for like fifty employees. And just so there was never a problem, because we were kind of running out of space, because the material, I guess originally, when they widened Route eighty, they were crushing material there, and like, all the raised land is just so compacted that it won't sieve through, so now it's down on where they found virgin soil, but it's within the encroachment area wetlands, not into wetlands, and they, like.
Move it down.
Yeah, right, yeah, we, yep, like twenty feet or something, yeah, and so then they over-engineered the system so that there would never be a problem, and again, so now a twenty thousand dollar septic system ended up going to sixty thousand, and then the, the amount of organics up front, we had to dig down seven feet, bring it all structural fill, and it's just like, I don't have the million eight to do the project, and the bank just told me to, just come up with those seven hundred grand, they go, yeah.
How, how many parking spots are gonna be on, in the lot?
So I'm only putting up the one building, David mentioned I needed thirty-two parking spots, on my engineered plans, I had thirty, but it was, I'm actually making the building smaller, so I didn't know if that changed anything.
I don't think, I don't know if that falls into, because it's private, this is like a, like, this is.
No stores, it's just a private warehouse.
Storage and everything, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
Can I, can I ask before we get to part, do you know, for all of us, do you know if, so, what, what do we need to do since what, what we're talking, what we're talking is, we haven't approved two of these bigger buildings, and we're just making one smaller? What, what is our purview, what do, what do, what do we have to do? Do you know?
Well, that's, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, is it, is it?
I mean, your, your regulation clearly says that site plans need to be engineered.
Yes.
In this case, it was engineered for A, and it was engineered for B, we have two plans, we don't have anything on our books that allow me or the chairman to approve minor modifications, whatever those are. So the question really is, does he need an engineer to come back and show you the two plans and stamp it? Or is he good to go under the two approvals and just reduce the size of the building and let it go at that? That's the question for.
Wouldn't we need a, an accurate Mylar to file of what is actually built, and has built or something, right?
And which plan will we approve?
Yeah.
Are we gonna approve, like, this, this one, or are we gonna approve this one and that one at the same time?
We've already approved them.
Oh, no, I know, but for, I'm saying for, for, for what he, what he wants to do, what he want to do, you know, with the modification, would we apply, like approve this, say, say this plan with the modification of reducing the square footage by X amount of square feet of the, you know, of site B, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just confused on what we, what our role, what we have to do, yeah, the process.
Well, that's.
We want to, I think, I personally want to make it less, I want to make it as simple as we can, but I just don't fully understand.
Make sure we do the right, go through the right channels, and go through the right process to approve this, so you can get your bill.
Well, I mean, the, the appropriate thing to do, and what, what I told John was to get them engineered, and come back with another site plan, and we'll approve it. I mean, that's, that's what the regulations require. But I'm, I'm here and John's here because he wanted to discuss it with you and not really hear that from me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, no, it wasn't that I didn't want to hear it from you, I, I was asking what, clearly, because these, Anderson originally had plans drawn for Walt, Tony Catapana, Walt Autobody, with three buildings, which was approved, and then I bought the property, took it down to two, and then now I'm only looking to put up one, you know, I'm still want, at some point I had the approval for the two, I'm only building the one. I have the stamped plans that show the two eighty by hundreds, but my engineering fees were supposed to be four thousand dollars for the project, and I'm over twenty-two thousand, so anytime I call him, it just hemorrhages more money, so that's where I'm like, how much more do I have to spend? And I mean, I'm just asking to put up a smaller building on something that I was already approved for, so I was confused, that's why I needed more engineered plans if I'm going smaller.
Yeah, that, that's why we have to clarify, from what I'm hearing from you, it's our, it's be, simple, we want to make it easy and simple too, the simple answer is, our regulations require it, I think, that's what I'm hearing, right?
That's pretty much.
So to Charles's point, we can't, like, we can't, how, how can we, what are we approving? Are we approving this, this, hybrid of this?
Even the one that you have where it's the, the one building, that, is that?
This one shows the two when it's stamped with, with the Anderson, yes.
And does that show the reduced size?
No.
No, it just shows the normal, the addition.
The eighty by a hundred, correct.
The larger size?
Yes.
And you said, you said you want to build both right now, or you're just gonna build the front one?
No, no, I can't, I can't afford one, so that's why I'm doing half. I'm trying, at this point, for this, this pole barn, I could, it's a hundred and six thousand dollars, I could pay for it, and then at some point I could save some money and then do concrete.
Right, 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 right.
And so I'm literally, I, they won't approve it, because obviously any mortgage company wants to hold a mortgage as well, and then it becomes more than a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot, and it's just not worth it. So I mean, I have the engineered plans with their stamps for the eighty by a hundred, and all I'm looking to do is just put it smaller, so that's where like, I, because I, I don't understand why, like, what I would need for a smaller building where I was approved for bigger.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not that, the approval overall isn't the problem, it's that the, the actual plans, that changes it from eighty to, you know, eighty, eight thousand to six thousand, whatever, and the, the exact, you know, whatever that, that building is, that's what we need to be able to prove, so when it's in our record and somebody walks in the property and they see a sixty-eight square hundred foot building, they're looking at the plan, they're like.
No.
It wasn't connected, you know, this isn't the same plan.
So what if I built, what if I just went back, could I build the eighty by a hundred and ran out of money and then just only built part of the building for now?
I mean, that's what happens a lot of times, you know, I mean, we give approval, we give approval to build an orange and they build an apple.
Yeah.
You know, and that's sort of my job, is to make sure that they build the orange, not the apple. I mean, I, I, I don't believe it's a big stretch for an engineer to put those two lines on the map, like, I know you, you beg to do.
I would literally have to go to a new engineer, because it's just, I can't.
I mean, it, we just can't, we can't just put a modification that says the, you know, with these plans that, you know, we're approving the plans with a two thousand, two thousand square foot reduction in, in, you know, footprint or square footage, I just don't, I don't know how the other work around it, there's another thing to do.
Yeah, I, that's why I look, I was looking at you, because.
I don't know what else we could do.
Yeah, I, I trust, I think, well, I'm hearing, certainly Charles and others, I think we're trying to make it as easy and simple, because we understand it, it's just, we have regulations, right? And if there's no, if there's no other way, I don't think there's any other way.
Well, it makes it difficult for me to say, you didn't follow the plan.
Right, right. And, and also too, and we understand your frustration in the sense that this is like, I don't know, the fifth one.
Five years.
Five years you've been doing this, this is the fifth one that you're doing, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was recruited by a town planner to like bring my business here.
Right, right.
I have seven trucks and fifteen trailers, I got employees that are buying lawn chip bells and getting gas at the gas station, buying coffee Cumberland Farms, I mean, I'm bringing revenue to the town. I get that I was approved for bigger, and I don't understand why I can't just build smaller, other than.
I, I think the thing is, is it's not just that it's smaller, it's, it's just that it's different, and if you think of it in the sense of, you know, how you said apples and oranges, it, to us, we understand that it's, oh, it's the same thing, it's just a little smaller, which is pretty straightforward, but underneath the, you know, legal code, you know, difference is, is different, and in which case, if the plans don't match up.
I, I would, I would say that if you need to get going on it, and buy the building before the price goes up next week.
Oh, they want to come put it in, and like, because I, I put a deposit on it, thinking that like, this, every, every engineer that I talked to said, oh, yeah, you should not know, everything fits in the footprint, you're, like.
No, and, and the approval of what you want is not a problem, that's not the problem. The issue is that we just, we needed.
The Mylar.
Yeah, we need the, the write-up of it, of what you're gonna do, like, the, the approval isn't the problem, like, we want it, like, the building shouldn't be a problem to, to get done in, in that footprint, that shouldn't be a problem. Problem is, we don't have the, like you said, the Mylar, the.
But if you got, if you got the building ordered and moving, you could be back here in March second, and we'll approve it.
Yeah.
So then how, so if it got approved on March second, how long does it take to get, like, what's the timeline for a building permit? Coincidentally, it's a day they want to start on this.
We could get.
Not trying to hold, not that it's your problem, it's mine.
If you got us plans ahead of that time to approve?
Well, I have, I mean, I have the plans to show a change, it just doesn't, it's, they're all copied sheets, like. Well, I have, I mean, I have the plans to show a change, it just doesn't, it's, they're all copied sheets, like.
I know, I know. But I'm saying if you got the building plans for the building official to sign off on.
Yeah, I know, I'm here to.
No, no, no. What the planner's looking for, I think, is, is what you're building.
Oh, the building, I got it right here.
Right, but we can, I can push those plans through so that he's got them approved at the same time we approve them.
So of the actual building itself?
Yeah.
I have those right here.
We can, we can push that through, it's a simple building, it's not a big, complex analysis for him.
So now, I, so I, I have to get re-engineered plans to show a smaller building?
He just really, he just needs to reduce the building and put the parking on and put the leader that goes from the building to the pond.
Like this?
Like what you drew?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, so I rescaled it all, I, I put, you just need it to be his print, not mine.
I mean, if you show that, show that to the commission and see what they say.
Yeah, I mean, you got chicken scratch for barns. You know, they're barns.
That, that shows the smaller building.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
This is the, I have copies of.
Before and after, just so we're all looking at the same thing. This is before, this is after.
Yep, this is the building.
Yeah.
Like here's even the original letter from Anderson to breaking it into the phases. That's why I, I, when I was trying to explain, David said that, well, there's only planned for one building, well, no, no, I had the two, but it was, Will wanted it divided for some reason.
I mean.
This is the, the July plan. So this, this one's updated, updated a little bit more because it has some edge of, edge of gravel. There's some other, there's some other changes to where the paving is here.
You're saying these are different dates? These, these look, these both say seven twelve, July twelve, July twenty-sixth?
Yeah, which day is that for?
We must have copied the wrong one, sorry.
This is a copy of this.
Yeah, yeah, this is a copy of this, yeah.
Correct, but the, but the, um. The final approval for this building.
Well, it shows the one building.
It shows the one building.
Because that's where Will wanted it divided into phases.
Correct, but there are, there are modifications on this plan where it's showing some, where's the stone? You see the processed stone? And it's down here. And there's some other paving.
Yeah, but that's, I'm not touching that building.
Let's see, that proposed by two minutes concrete area is not on this plan.
Cause that was, Victor had us make a few final changes for the handicap parking.
Correct, so that's why I wanted, I, I didn't want this plan to.
Can we draw this on the most up-to-date map?
Well, that's what happens, yeah.
Would that, that's what we need.
Would that satisfy the?
Yeah, I think so, I think if you could do it.
This is the most up-to-date map?
Yeah, that's the approved plan for the one building.
Yeah, can we try to?
Do we have to also draw these, uh, some of the maps here? Besides the building that's not here?
That was it.
Is that, the leader line? The building, these parking spots?
Yes, cause Will wanted it broken into phases.
Right, right. So if we modify this map, that we approve, approve this map with the marker modification?
I don't, I don't really have a problem with.
Or can we approve the seven twenty, whatever plan?
Well, no, because it doesn't have, it doesn't have the changes down here.
Well, or can we make a motion if I go back to doing building A, then it needs to be re-engineered and approved by the town?
Is that an addendum we can make? That, that we could say that on this, this plan, building A is not being approved, only building B?
You're the commissioner, you can do that.
I feel like that's pretty plain English and I think we would be able to.
I'm not looking for that.
No, no, it's not that, we just want to make, we're, we're protected in the sense of what we approve, they come back to us.
It's unfortunate, I mean, the cleanness thing, it's unfortunate that we, I know, I understand it's cost and time and that could just be transferred. A leader line in that, like that, out of this, then it's done, the whole thing is done and you don't have to come back here, because you're already, when you're ready for this, you're ready to go, you know?
Well, you can just, you can just cut and paste this, you get the property lines.
Yeah, you could cut and paste it.
If, if we do move all this over here too, but I'm, I'm just looking at all the additional things too, I would say that, you know, this, making sure that if, if we combine these two maps, it's, you know, all, everything files over. So, in the sense too, you know, I'm just trying to think what else, you know, what other possibilities we could do if, yeah, this is. This is, this, you don't have one that's updated like this with old building back here?
No, because Will had us take it off.
Yeah.
We've got the previous town manager and he asked us to break it down into phases. That's okay, so we did.
At the time, that's, that's because this is the building you wanted to build, right?
Correct, yeah, because that's, so I have, like with the trucks and stuff, I can't put two buildings up to know how they're moving. So that's where I was just, it was gonna be one and then he said, well, if you're doing one, then just show one, show it in phases and that's where we have this.
Yeah.
And then.
Now it's, now we're gonna build those ones.
I can't afford that, so I'm trying to just do something.
Right.
And of course David's stuck in the middle, what's up?
I said, I don't have a copy of that.
Oh, that was a weird decision, because, um, David's just stuck trying to deal with two other players.
Yeah, no, I know.
This is, this one.
David, do you like this one?
Sure, that's an excellent.
This is the, this is the older one, that's, this is, these are the same things, these are both seven twelve. So this is, this is.
Just the original stuff, put that right there.
These are rolled up, I don't need time maps up here.
So we're not using this one, we're all very one. This is the, well, well, yeah, this one, the overall.
I'm not sure we can do anything, because we don't have, it's not, even if, even if you said cut it and paste it on, it's not like we're gonna do that now.
No, I, I think if, if you wanted to be.
We could bring it to March second, you could work with the town, the building official to get the building moving.
I don't, I don't.
And then March second, you come with this.
And yeah, if you come with this moved over here with all the vertical lines.
With the lines, then we approve it, because it's pretty straight, it's very straightforward. It's just then we'll look, we're looking at actually what we're talking about. It's accurate and it's reflecting what you're trying to do.
And then we could just approve this map.
And you're still in parallel, everything else will be parallel with the building officials moving forward.
Any of this actually matter if we're not doing that building at this moment?
It matters because it's, it's on the map. You know, if it wasn't on the map and it was just that building in the corner, then different story, but it's here and this is the most up-to-date one and without us going through the entire process of, of reapproving everything, we can, we can take this and move forward, assuming, you know, building off of what the last commission approved and it's easier for us to, you know, approve this approved map with the addendum on it.
It's gonna save you time in the long run instead of breaking.
So I, I think, I think that's the best bet then, then adding this over here and then just add all the details along with this, much, all the parking lines, the runoff, the lead line and, and just making sure that, you know, these spaces here, I think, would need.
Right, so those, those were the ones that all went with that other building.
Everything that, everything that, just make, you know, as, as accurate as possible, all this stuff. And then.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I would say just, and then next time too, just bring this map again as a reference and then.
I think that's.
That would work, yeah, I think that's the, that would be the plan.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, keep these on the table. We might even, potentially too, we could look into maybe just saying that this map be used as a reference when we approve this map or something too, just to, you know, I, you know, just to kind of keep as much accurate material together as possible or something like that too, but, yeah. I think that's it, I don't think we need to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, and then you'll work with the building official to, you can.
So, so John will work with the planning and building department to come up with a site plan modification that would not be stamped by an engineer, but would be approvable as a minor modification.
Yes.
Yeah.
So can I pull a building permit?
That's, I think, that's what I said too, right, you could.
I think you should, yeah, I'll talk to the building official.
Okay, okay.
Let's talk.
I think we're, so, as you know, the message to him, if he has, like, we're, we're okay with what we're talking about. As long as we see what we've just discussed, we're fine.
These, these ones are here, is David?
Good guys, everyone?
Yeah, I have.
Ron? Okay.
I think that's it, I don't think we need to vote on anything, that's just, we'll, you know, make a motion, move this or, we didn't, do we have it on the agenda, do we have to table it for next time?
Was this a consult really, or what was this, so we don't have to approve anything, right?
Okay.
In full of conversation.
Okay, we're good, thanks.
Thank you.
March sixth.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. All right, any else under other business?
Yes, I have one other piece that I'd like to pass around. There's a, a proposal I've received to build, to install an ice machine.
All right.
Next to the former IGA on Branford Road, the liquor store is planning on moving into the IGA at some point. And they would like to put this large ice machine in two of the parking spaces next to the IGA. It's basically, I think it's twenty-four by fifteen by ten, it's a pretty large ice machine. It takes up two parking spaces. I believe that it's an accessory use to the liquor store and is permitted as of right and with a zoning permit, they could just put it in. That's my feeling. I just wanted to run it by you guys and see if you think it needs site plan approval or anything above a permitted use of right as an accessory use.
Is that a permanent building or like a trailer?
It's like a trailer.
And is it, it's a private parking lot, right? It's the privately owned parking lot, so the, okay.
So the owner would have to approve.
Yeah, the owner would have to approve.
It meets all the setback requirements. You know, it's like the ice machine they put out in front of the liquor store, except it's twenty times as big.
I, I remember seeing those when I was in.
I never seen that.
They had big ice machines like that.
Yeah, you could buy a twenty-pound bag or a ten-pound bag.
Well, it wasn't exactly like that.
Aesthetically, what, he doesn't want to tuck it on the side of the building or something? Or is it for customers to get ice?
It's for customers.
Oh, it's for, I got you, so you want an accessory.
Well, it's a well-lit public place, so people feel comfortable walking up to it.
Well, it's not, it's not really in sight from the street or anything, because it's around the side of the IGA.
Okay, yeah, got you, got you.
They'll haul it in and drop it off and they want to get rid of it, they can haul it out, it's not.
I, key message, you said it's accessory use and it's zoned by rights, so I don't know, we have much to say, right?
Just wanted to.
Yeah, if you get the approval through the owner, I mean.
Does he have enough parking spaces?
Exactly.
That's a good question.
They have a.
Plenty.
Plenty of parking spaces.
Good question.
And that IGA building is not looking great on the inside, so I don't know if anything's gonna go in there anytime soon.
Do taxes go up, because this is more square footage? Does that mean?
That would be taxable, sure.
Yeah, the building taxes are gonna go up?
Yeah.
Probably it's personal property.
Yeah.
Have to check with the assessors.
I'm just curious, I have.
Yeah, I think it's personal property for sure.
Yeah.
I have questions about it, as long as it meets everything, all setbacks, everything's good, I'm, I'm. Is this, is there official application for this?
No, I've just run it by you, just to give you a heads up and for you to say, no, Mr. Planner.
All right, well, there's, well, there's nothing for us to approve right now, you could let them know they could put in the application now? Without, without what we do.
They would just give me the administrative application and.
Well, should, should we vote on that then?
No, it's just information. I think by regulation, I have that right and I just wanted to run it by you, because.
Good, thank you, yeah.
I like that.
The regulations in North Branford are pretty, pretty, send a lot of stuff to you guys rather than just to me, which may be good for you to know about it, but it slows people down and.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that the?
That's it for me.
Any town planners report, anything else?
I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
I'm ready for my part.
If not, yeah, we're ready for Ron, Ron's, uh, take us out.
A motion will adjourn.
Second, all right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, excellent, thanks.